One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, since he's not here, what if I go ahead and bring up this health care budget? He was informed about it. That's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so I did check with Jonathan, that extra four thousand eight hundred. So the extra four thousand eight hundred sixty-two for the new crisis center allocation. I don't know if it's one time or if it's gonna be forever, but I will find that out. I did talk to Jonathan and see if he would be interested in paying part of that. But, so he said, well, find out some more information. So as I went back and looked at the healthcare sales tax fund that we have, there is a substantial amount of money in it. So if you see this mental health, there it goes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
I was just explaining to them about the healthcare sales tax and I contacted you about paying that extra a little bit, if you'd be interested in that.
Sure.
So as I look at the healthcare sales tax, it looks like the fund is pretty flush.
Okay.
So the four thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars that they're wanting extra from us for this new crisis center, that will help use tremendously once they get it up. I think, I feel like we could probably just take that healthcare sales tax and not have to burden anybody else with it.
Okay.
And as far as the budget for that, they wanted eighteen eighty-five for the year of twenty-six. We're, we budgeted for twenty-five for eighteen thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars, which is point two nine nine mils. And for, the increase is like forty-two dollars for next year. So when that comes around, we want to talk to our accountant about that, how to maybe fund that differently or leave it like it is, it's not much, so. It's funded, so, you know, as far as that goes, we'll go ahead and put that in for the healthcare sales tax.
Okay.
See if we can't.
I was gonna say, I got, I got a little additional information this morning that they, that group may have found some other additional funding as well.
Oh, perfect.
So you may want to just check with them.
Okay.
That they, they may have found some other grant funds or things to help, so.
I hear it.
Because it, the areas certainly would be beneficial to everybody in the area. There's twenty-four beds, so, I mean, we're talking psychics, that's really not many beds.
It's not, but.
But it's better than, yeah.
We don't have to hold them and we just have to go to haze with them, that'd be good.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic, yeah, that'd be fantastic. Okay, great.
Okay, you're up now.
Okay, thanks. We've got several things going on. The biggest thing next week, the twenty-first, twenty-second, that I mentioned before, is our strategic planning sessions coming up. Love to have you guys there, if you're available at those times. The twenty-first, it's two thirty to four thirty, and the twenty-second, it's eleven to one, just in the telemed room. Should be really good discussion. The first day is kind of a, a, this is the current status of things. And then we, the idea is we talk about some things and you take the evening, kind of sleep on it and come back and talk about maybe some opportunities or needs that the community has. So that'll be, that'll be a great process to go through. Also, the PFAC committee, which is patients, family and community, discussed basically doing, when enrollment time comes along again, some kind of community benefit enrollment, education and service opportunity, where we actually would bring in brokers from the marketplace insurance, so people can be educated on what their options are there, but also Medicare enrollment brokers. So people can have their questions asked, right? And it's, it's one of those things that nobody's ever really happy with what they pay for health insurance, but they probably have some questions about it, what that looks like, what it means, how to help parent plan for that. And so we're looking at, at a way that we can kind of help provide education, but also possibly help people get signed up in as supportive manner as possible for them to help decrease the uninsured population in the area. And so I, I think that's one thing that we can probably do to help with that. So watch for that information kind of coming out through the year, particularly as it gets closer to open enrollment time.
How many's on that four bit you were just talking about?
The PFAC committee?
Yeah.
Seven or eight.
And some of them are from, from the community?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, there's only a couple of us from the hospital. So, yeah, we've tried to, tried to reach out and, and get some input from, from the community as well, so.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah. Upcoming hospital week is May twelfth to sixteenth, so if you're bored coming down to the hospital, we'll have lots of activities going on. Where we'll, I mean, we're gonna have games throughout the week. We're gonna have a dress-up day and, and then we're gonna put whoever dresses up on our Facebook page and whoever gets the most likes at the end of the week will get to pie myself, Stephanie and Dr. Handy in the face. So, yeah, the, kind of the barbecue culmination, that's, that's what everybody wanted to do, so. So we're gonna, we're gonna have some fun with that, yeah. And then the new clinic, we're planning the ribbon cutting ceremony originally was June twenty-seventh, but due to some attendee conflict things, we moved that to July second from four to six P M. And so you're, you're invited to that. We'd love to have as many in the community come attend that as, as we can. Actually reached out to Governor Kelly's office to see if she can come and, and say a couple of words and having K H A, Kansas Hospital Association, reach out to other state legislators to kind of help bring attention to rural healthcare and some of the things that, that are particular struggles for us and give them an opportunity to kind of speak in the community maybe a little bit. But we're excited, the clinic's moving right along. See they're, they're starting work on some concrete work around the curbs and those kinds of things. It's gonna be beautiful once all said and done. Of course, little things come up here and there, but we, we work through them. You can see, I think, almost all the windows are in now. And they're getting flooring down, so it's, it's really coming to, to the end of it. So also as part of the ribbon cutting, I think we're gonna try to take some time to allow people to walk through the clinic and kind of see it in the open house style deal. So we're very, very excited about it. Very excited for, for what it means for the community and for our providers and to be able to have a space that, that they feel is equal to the kind of character capable of providing, so. But that'll be great. And access control system, the end of this month, we're gonna have that new access control system being installed, which means everybody in the hospital will be getting new badges as part of that process to work through. But there's several, there's several logistic things that that will help with. And one of these actually will end up be going on the wellness center area as well, because as part of our cost report, we have to document who all uses the wellness center apartment. And so we're looking at some things and how we can adjust that and still make sure that the community has access. We're, we're in discussions about how to make that look right now.
So one little thought for that, since you're going new, you know?
Yeah.
Is to let law enforcement have a badge too?
Oh, it's a great idea, yeah.
Because if they need to get in, we don't want to have to stick under this door.
Yeah.
Especially if something goes wrong.
Yeah, that's, that's a fantastic idea. Law enforcement had not come up in, in the new badge system, so I appreciate you bringing that up. Okay. Let's see. We currently, and just to let everybody be aware of this, we have a major echocardiogram backlog in the community right now. But we have a potential solution for that, an individual, a lot of Hutch, that has equipment that he can bring, that we're kind of in the beginning stages of evaluating what that cost looks like and how often we can bring them on to help catch that up. So that's one service area that I think that we have the potential to correct and expand a little bit. And there are other areas that can come up, particularly at the strategic planning session, that, that they don't know work for our given situation. We know we need access to them, but we have to study some of those things.
So haze is slow coming out, or they got?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's been some personnel issues, I think, that have attributed to it. So if you look, a few years ago, there's really a big push for R Ns, right? And that, that's still there, R Ns are still definitely in need. But it seems like the system's starting to catch up on that. But where it's starting to lag is in the allied health professions, right? So radiology techs, lab techs, those kinds of things is where we're, we're starting to see and more crush on that aspect of it. So I think it's, it's really a personnel question. Same with our mammography, right? And we have that bus coming in and, but there's a backlog that's formed over that because of their own radiology techs that are able to be certified in doing that particular service. So that creates an environment where it's not a simple solution.
Sure.
Right, and, and, but we're worried those things and we work on them and keep ours open to opportunities for them. But overall, things are going really, really well. And we're excited to progress and move forward and love working with the county and want to make sure that we're providing the best care we can to people here, so. It's why we got into the business.
That's what it's about, yeah.
Definitely.
So I won't be able to attend your meeting on end, but if I could, if you suggest it, I can just give it right to you, maybe you can.
Absolutely, yeah, that'd be great. I appreciate that very much. All right, any questions for me or concerns or?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
All right, Kendra, do you have any business to add?
First things first, will you guys be able to read the minutes from April eighth?
Let me refresh the perimeter minutes for you.
Second?
Yes.
And then just for some more clarification on the mental health. So we're needing to write High Mental Health Center a check for the forty-eight sixty-two twenty-four?
Correct, out of healthcare sales tax.
This year.
This year.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think you've already made some allocations for the middle of that big part of that.
Correct. Okay, so I just, I was on the same page as everybody. Okay, and then we have a notice to township born for Writers Inc. They have applied for a non-beer license for the fairgrounds. So if you want to review that, that is, you would just sign their, check if you approve it. And then following pages will send to the, like, the township for them to sign back and send back to us.
What is?
Denied, and then I'll sign it and we'll send it off.
Okay, wait, you're ready? Don't have much, everybody's out waiting. I got a bulldozer and a grader cutting down banks over on Yeru for a couple of farmers, John, Dogger and Corey Singer. Other than that, I did want to talk to you guys a little bit about, you, you had talked to Doug about graders. He gave me some. And I told him, I tried to feel you guys out, are you thinking about brand new or used, good used?
Want to see all of our options and?
He didn't give me anything. Of course, they can't really, if it's gonna be a sealed bid, they can't give the same numbers. If we decide it. I've got a printout of the picture thing very good and it's a used one, so they've got. If you want a better looking at this, I've got a colored picture.
You can have it if you need it.
No, I'll take that colored one back.
Okay.
No, the printer's really dark. I mean, the print's good, but the picture's not very good.
So if he's used one, is there any kind of like warranty or anything on that?
He didn't really get that deep into it, but the brand new ones, like he can buy a warranty package. I think Cat has maybe three years or something, and then you can buy like a seven year.
So what's a new replica cost?
He didn't really, I think they're like three eighty or something. But I know Go County bought one here, a month or two ago, and they paid over four hundred, four twenty or something, but I think they bought the, the full warranty with it. They're high. But what a lot of counties are doing, they're financing them and then they budget that amount in there to, to make that payment. Just like Doug was telling me, four hundred and then, like, and it's paid off, they buy another one.
Right.
Some of them buy them before they're paid off, but, and it's all budgeted in, so they pay, make that payment every year or whatever.
Right.
So.
Did you guys dip that with your?
We did that with every company. We put like, well, they, they took our old one in like a hundred and fifty thousand and then we give them a hundred thousand. And then we set it up, I think, on a three-year, three-year payment.
Right.
It was like ninety-six thousand a payment, so. You know, that looked a lot better a few years ago when the interest rate was like.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And I'm not sure what the interest rate is.
Yeah, that would be the other part. Interest rate, yeah, is not good, but it's possible it's a little better. Interest rates.
He didn't tell me, he didn't tell me what the rate was, but he said they tried to come back down to comparable, but.
What do you think you can get some paperwork on that, on a new one?
Well, they're not even giving me any numbers.
John Deere's supposed to be doing it, aren't they?
He gave me a copy of, and I didn't break with me, that, just all the options that you get on the grader. But they're not gonna give me any numbers.
Oh.
They, they can give me the used prices here.
Right.
But the bidding process on a brand new would, that he's sealed with what you want on it. That way you can't kind of say, well, he's got his for three hundred and fifty, can you beat that or whatever? It's kind of a sealed bid, you don't know until you open the bids, so.
And the front wheel assist is probably worth it too, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. I've never run the one that Josh runs, but, but that stupid thing's got air conditioning problems. It's setting in the shop, Zach's trying to figure out the A C on it.
Just put a bigger fan in there.
If it's got a cat or a toy inside of it, the air conditioner don't work.
Them all things probably get pretty hot.
Oh, yeah, well.
It's a glass house.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you can grow vegetables in there.
On a hundred degree day, you got, well, what's, what's really worse than anything is like, say you're blading five mile an hour and the wind's blowing five mile an hour.
Oh, yeah.
And that dirt just comes off that moldboard and just kills the inside of it.
Yeah. Gets in them fans and then it doesn't work and?
Zach kind of hates it when you run it with the, with the doors open, because it fills all the filters.
Oh, yeah, no.
Inside.
Sure. People all run an open air cab tractor before, we know that's not actually.
Well, to me, if the A C don't work, it busts all the windows out and has a number.
A lot of news. It must look real good, boy.
Because it ain't, it ain't near as hot in there, geez, with just a shade over your head.
I don't know, nervous if you can't open the windows, it's just the doors or something.
Just the doors. The, the John Deere, the one John Deere that Taylor runs, it's got the two little side windows and you can open them up. That's still on. The old old cats have the windows down below when you're looking down, they would have. I just thought it's more dirty than.
You like cat better than John Deere or you don't ever run a John Deere?
I've run a John Deere a little bit. What I like about a cat, there's key things. The John Deere's light in the front, which we was gonna remedy that on one, and we bought a big weight, which we never had. Hooking on snowplow attachment, because the front end's real light on it, try to hold the front end better if you're elevated. But the, the cat has a sliding moldboard that has a cylinder and you can take four holes out and you can adjust it to where you can slide that moldboard out farther. Well, the John Deere's welded solid. So if your back's open, reaching that back's open, it hits off hard on the bottom, you'll cut a groove. The lower the cat will go, way up there. But other than that, the John Deere's got more power. And the John Deere's got a really nice A C, heat it now. That's the only two things that I've ever really complained about on the John Deere. Can't get by, I mean, you, it's usable the way it is, but I, I even talked to, Daryl Dupree used to be the salesman out of Dog City. You need to take this back to your bosses or the factory where, tell them to quit welding that moldboard some other solid, make it adjustable like a cat. To my knowledge, the new ones are still that way, but.
Did you go to the K A C waiting out or?
Yeah.
Get anything out of it?
I don't know, it's, in the afternoons, they talk a lot about pavement and stuff, which we don't do. But I, I don't get much out of them myself, but. I don't know, you guys were there for it, did you get much out of it in the mornings? I, I kind of like watching the representatives, the senators get to go out there, start to go out of town, but.
Well, I did have a question, well, I was out visiting with them the other day.
Yeah.
And that road that they use for their, bringing the semis and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, that road is city or is that county or?
It's not us.
It's not us.
They said he was gonna come in, that's what, yeah, we said nothing.
Yeah.
We like coming in from the west by the football field.
Yeah.
We used to, we worked on it, we didn't really maintain it, but we put some material on it, the diamond dude and.
Well, I did talk to Dennis a little bit about it and he, he said that, you know, in the past, you guys have run a maintainer up and down and managed some material.
Well, they used to always dump their screenings from their street machine, their screamer. They go up there and dump it and.
Yeah.
And E J, E J was blading to take care of it. I think if they ever, and we put like a lift of material on it before, but we haven't worked on it lately and usually that's the deal where if he calls me.
Right.
But other than that, we don't mess with it.
Yeah, I would just find out information on it, so, yeah.
But what about the?
He told me he's gonna come in and talk to us.
To, to work on that or what about the deal that he was gonna change that route?
No, nothing about that. No, it was for now, they weren't really. Just wanted to talk to Jessica and the new president, whatever his name, can't remember what his name is. But, yeah, they, they weren't, they were more concerned about this for now.
Oh, just.
And maybe we can look into the new road later down the road, but. So if, if it's okay with y'all, can you reach out to them and see if they need to, Joe, if they come in here and call you or someone, my colleagues?
They really need a phone call that said that he was gonna get the city council together to get with you there.
Yeah, that's what needs to happen, since it's their, their responsibility, they want us to do it, yeah.
Well, in the past, Dennis just called out there.
Yeah, no, I, he said, yeah, take care of. I'm not sure it's just being late either, I think it's putting more material on, he didn't go into detail.
Right. Yeah, or the one that we worked on the city, yeah. I want to get that one on there, because I don't know if you want to show them.
So that might be too, probably dusty down there.
Probably the milling room, yes. But they're not, I mean, we put a few millings on there, God, we're going out shopping, they're recording. I mean.
It entered it.
The only way milling's seen they're really working, put dirt with them, mix them up, put dirt with them.
Yeah, because I know that once in bogue, they, they, you know, they get pretty wacky soon.
And they say it's not the blade man, it's the starting and stopping.
Right.
And trucks come in for landing in the bogue and hit the brakes and bunches up or when they're heading out to town.
It, it don't have to be trucks, cars, because.
It's got slippage and then it starts courting. And I don't think they want that around there courting it. But I could maybe try to mix up a batch of dirt milling.
I'd just give him a call and see what he's thinking for sure. Yeah, that's what I, if you were okay with that, because, you know, the streets in bogue, we got some grizzle from Lincoln, and I don't know if they're still open or not. But those streets, I mean, they held up really, really good.
But they must have mixed something with them.
Yeah, I can get with.
Keller.
Kellers and, and talk to him and see what they did.
Did he have any new though, or was that back from Dan's office?
No, it was all Keller.
Keller?
Yeah, Keller brought all that stuff in. And at that time, Lincoln actually brought it out and, and spread it, and then they kind of came in and groomed it, but, man, the streets have held up like I've never seen.
Well, Piper's got that, it's, it'd be more of a greener rock, it's not white, but it's got kind of a clay or screen and that.
That's kind of what that looks like.
It packs in pretty nice.
It does, you know, that first little bit, it has to get wired in, but, because that first bit, you go clear to the base, but once it gets there, it's a good base, so. So I guess you want to get with Dennis and y'all can kind of figure out what.
That gives. So who pays for that, the county, the city?
That is theirs, I'd say that, I mean, it'd have to be them because it's their.
Because I could get old Leon, I know Leon had some stuff he called inch minus switches.
Right, that's what he was, that's what Keller was talking about too, having that inch minus.
I called Joe and see if he's got them all and see. No reason why I'm suggesting that maybe because you don't have the truck from, from Cleveland, you have that stuff.
Yeah, no.
But we use that stuff a lot of times to just to patch a puddle, it packs in tight.
And he actually put it on a road out there, I guess, and it holds really, it's good, I heard a lot of good stuff.
Well, what they did was, I don't know how they got it so thin, they just spread it like paper thin down the hill and around the corner to the south a little bit. And that stuff was maybe just real fine, the screenings, it didn't even, inch minus will have like an inch rock. The stuff that we, we're not out of it, it's, Leon thought it was maybe two inch minus, because it's got bigger chunks in it. But it packs you good, and that might be, that might be the answer, but I just wondered if you, because it's probably at least thirty bucks a ton.
Well, I'd say we find out what everybody wants to do and then maybe get a price and then we can kind of negotiate with. We could do the work and they could pay for the materials.
It won't, it won't take very long.
Yeah.
Because you, you don't want it burnt there.
Yeah, so if you want to kind of work towards that and kind of look at it, we'll, we can give it fixed up because they are a big company, who want to keep happy for an inch?
And we need to, yeah, figure out something more permanent for maintenance and stuff on it.
Just people last with all those trucks and everything.
Will?
Good idea.
You might be surprised, because that stuff when it packs in, it's almost.
In fact, you don't even want to mess with it.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard, if it does like that streets in bogue, you don't even want jacklady to dismiss.
So who do I get on, who do I call? Dennis?
Yeah.
Let's start with Dennis.
Yeah, start with Dennis and then go out, maybe y'all can go out and talk to them, see what they're really needing and then kind of see what kind of stuff like that, that'd be great if you do that.
So did they decide not to ever build a road from the north?
It was kind of dropped, so. Yeah, I guess there was a little land problem in between, kind of what Dennis was letting on to, and it kind of got dropped. But, you know, the opportunity's probably still there and maybe it's something we can look to see if there's funding for roads and stuff adjacent and maybe see if we can get it through there.
The only thing I told them, I think J U was the one that I talked to most on it, was I needed eighty feet to make them get rid. Because that's flat bone and bringing it up and have it twenty-six foot tall. And eighty feet sound like a lot, but it's, once you cut it, frame it all in and know that that's what it takes.
Sure.
The back slope.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, for sure. Well, let's get the quick fix, just so, as soon as we can get started with that, we can do there. That's what you all think?
Yeah, I, I gotta start with calling Joe.
Yeah, I don't have Dennis.
Call Dennis and then, and I can give you, I have Jessica, I'll give you, I can give you Jessica's number too, but I don't have Joe.
I got it, you'll send it to you.
Just send it to her.
Did I mention you fixing up our tree dump? Thank you very much for that.
Well, that's kind of a combination with Gaylord Cosman.
Oh, yeah.
He was complaining because the heat was burning up his fence posts.
Oh.
Making his wire heat treated where it was burning, breaking stuff, so. Went over there, yeah, and I told him, I said, the only thing that I can think of, we can maybe do is, and I called Nate or it's he's, I don't know, that's his uncle or somebody that owns that land, he said he wasn't care of it. I told Gaylord, I said, we can move it a little bit east and then maybe build a burn to keep the heat off of your fence and that's how.
Looks good, bro, looks good.
It's deep, a son of God's got twenty-four.
I know, they don't call in.
Yeah, but that's what some said, well, some of the people are probably gonna, probably gonna roll into it, I said, well, I don't know. A lot of times they dump way away, somewhere like over the fishing.
A little closer, it would be better for everybody.
But it, it's clear hole or the other tip's clear hole and it's not good time to burn.
I know.
So I just told, had table group, texted it, we just, they're big old.
No, that's decided, the city of Bogue thinks, I mean, we are gonna get a sign up so that we don't get people from all over bringing it in.
Well, the thing that I want for us is when we debote, we have, we don't have to haul all the trash to our, it's handy. And then we also bring the community streets in.
Right, yeah, so, good.
Thank you. That's why we did it, so.
Excellent.
Are we done?
We're done.
So you guys, thank you.
Do you want your color copy back, please?
It don't matter, I can print it out, you guys want that? It's just a better picture.
Yeah.
Alright, see you.
See you. Alright, so we have the PR license, we're looking at that, I'll need a motion on that to approve the consent of the township.
I saw. Can I see it? Application?
It's just your application, just the notice to send to, what's the send to them? Township. They'll send that, that's what the township will send after us, saying they could either approve it or deny it. And the next, we just have a couple, um, I put HR vouchers, so basically this is just the quarterly unemployment tax that I do every quarter. Um, and then we have another one that's, um, it's a penalty that we had for, um, cancer withholding, um, because we were not able to file that timely. So if you, it was, they were wires, there's gonna be no checks with those, um, because I just did wires. Um, so if I could settle three, we sign those that way. I know you all reviewed them, approved them. Next is just the contract with, um, Northwest Cancer Planning, um, and Development Commission. Can we just do this annually? Um, Karina sent this over, so I'll have you, Jared, go ahead and you're the reviewer, review that and sign it. I'm the second reviewer on there.
Yeah, thank you.
I can do that for.
Really a little man in the group.
Yeah. That'll be a sign over there.
Well, we'll see this for a second.
Next, I have Resolution twenty twenty-five oh five, it's the Grand County Appointed Attorney Application Resolution that, um, Michael Abbott's already presented to you guys, um, he just needed the resolution number, um, so I, it's gonna be twenty twenty-five zero five. Um, so I have the original, if you guys just wanna review it again or just sign up on it, the signature part is on the back. So that is the original, if you guys just wanna sign off on that. I believe you guys are already reviewing, approved, I will just need the number, so I'll go ahead and take the motion up today.
Okay, that's what I'm doing.
The next thing I did include in your packets are some bids for the camps, so someone can wait on those. I do have Curtis friends with Next Act coming, he wanted to be here to approve, I mean, to present Next Act.
Okay.
Um, I felt like it might be for sense than just you guys reviewing them.
Sure.
I and Eric, I and Eric Alert is also with that, you guys can review that, thank you. Um, they're not going to be here to present theirs, uh, but we can review that and discuss that afterwards. We did have Banker Security come out and do a walkthrough to give us a bid. We still haven't heard anything, I waited on this for two weeks to hear back from them, so we went ahead and are presenting these as is with two. And if you guys want us to still wait on Banker Security, we can, um, I, I felt like we'd have given them two weeks to wait on a bid. Felt like that was ample time for them to, to get it to us, I told them to get it to us as soon as possible. So we'll wait on that. I also put in your packets an invite to the KNRC dinner and meeting, that's informational only. The R S U P date was yesterday, um, I also emailed that to you guys, but she knows that you guys weren't meeting until today. Um, but I reached out to her, so if you guys are still interested in that, she said an R S U P today would be just fine. Um, so if you guys are interested in that, just let me know or you guys can be R S U P on your own, whichever is best, it's fine. Chief Judge Halla Hopeaker also stopped in yesterday and said that she wanted to remind you guys of the breakfast on April thirtieth at seven thirty in Logan, um, so that's, I think I included that in packets as well. So that's that, if you guys wanted an R S U P or our county R S U P for you, if you guys decided to go, just let me know. She did say nobody from Grand County has R S U P, so she would like to see one of you guys go. And then lastly, the last thing in your packet, I won't present, that's just for your guys' information, um, Les will present that. I love fifteen, so, as for me, that's.
Any other bids on there?
The last.
Yeah.
That's how I did the bait.
Alright, take a recess till ten forty-five. Do we know what time that their breakfast is?
Seven thirty AM. She said the same thing, cause I know it's early, but. Oh, it's at the Hough Boys Brewery Center in Phillipsburg, it's not Logan, the thing in the morning before is in Logan, and this is in Phillipsburg.
Well, why don't you go ahead and put me down for the breakfast.
Not that I know of, no, alright.
No, you want your staff, you want your staff to step out? You're allowed to feel that way or what's your keys?
Keys.
Okay.
You know the email.
Okay, well, so I was, I was like, I haven't been it wrong this whole time, so I changed it to one two today and I was. Good thing I was not doing it wrong this whole time.
Do I have any vouchers to sign with or?
Um, you just have these two, actually, just two today.
Good, yeah.
Just two today, you want us to go real fast on them? Um, you got ten.
I'm sure.
Cause you got the face of food.
Once quarterly unemployment taxes that I filed quarterly and then one, we have penalty from. I mean, I'll file that one. And then we'll, we'll have vouchers next week.
Okay, sounds good.
And then we did, we did the, uh, resolution, it did not.
Okay. And did they approve the DCF?
We have revisited that.
Okay, so. Perfect, thanks so much.
We have all kinds of. Ten forty-five.
Luke went to Wichita with, uh, Crystal and a bit of Snapper for that, or maybe last night. He wasn't really serious, he really wanted to do something like that.
What was that, the people?
It's that ramp that Crystal had us.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
So. But the purpose here wasn't good.
Were you John of Western Kansas?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I shouldn't said that. It's like I'm waiting on Ford, just stumble in here.
Wasn't sure.
Not as busy today as last time, I hope your last time was. The line at the door, Ford last time I was here. Go get the shit, please. Very good starter.
Just give us just.
Yeah, just call them.
That'll be fine.
How are you today?
I'm doing well, good. Well, somewhat wooded construction on the way up here, I was in Hoxier before here sometimes, yeah. It's right there north of Oakley, I shut down that little, it's just, oh, it's eight, eight, eighty-three.
Right.
But it's just a small patch and no signs before you make that right turn, it kinda goes, it's like. Luckily, that's one of the few smaller, one of the towns you can still get to I seventy pretty, pretty easily to the other way, so, yeah. Like, you know. Other than that, it's, it was a beautiful day out, no, no wind, no, no wind, no blowing dust for the most part, no rain.
Pretty chilly last night, yeah.
Yeah, it was nice, yeah, I was like not ready to turn on the AC, look, Sunday. Sunday we got up in the nineties, like, I'm not ready for this shit. So yeah, opened the wall, had my kids open the wall windows last night, or the night before, it's just. Be happy with the spring weather while it's here, it sounds like I might crank up pretty quick on this.
True.
Yeah, enjoyed that. Got yard work done without having to feel too miserable about just being in the heat, so just, just yet, so.
Yeah, you are, or good for you.
I know, I was wishing it was Thursday.
You did.
Weather's day, you'll walk around golf course all day.
Okay, dog, you're up.
Well, uh, folks, what I have in front of you is, uh, statistics for our twenty twenty-four grounded thirty-four counties. Uh, and also broken up by services provided on that green map there, service provided, services provided for county and also the children, uh, number of children that we've served up here, uh, uh, throughout, throughout our thirty-four counties. If you have that breakdown, y'all will have to see that, I can provide the copy for that or email y'all copy that as well. Uh, then on the backside of one of those pages, I believe as well as our overall statistics across thirty-four counties. Uh, age group of children that we've served, um, uh, pervert trader information, that's something as well too, um, races, missing children. Um, also some quick, quick statistics of the, um, therapy services, our, our therapists are providing advocate services and our, uh, our medical services as well too, so, um, kinda before I get too far. I do really wanna tell you folks, I would greatly appreciate your support. Um, we're kinda getting to a point right now where, uh, we're hearing murmurs of freezing to our state federal grants, we don't know for sure. Uh, we did have that initial one, I believe it was beginning of February, it was, we signed on Thursday and rescinded on a Monday, if I remember correctly. That timeline's probably not right, I'll have to check that for sure. Um, but in that time, we did receive a letter from one of our grants, actually one of our grants that funds, helps to fund our medical program. That essentially is like, hey, we don't know the future, continue at your own risk. I mean, that was rescinded, but still, okay, we don't know for sure if that's gonna be something coming down the line. Uh, so I really, really would, uh, thank you folks for supporting our agency, um, and kinda what we do out here. Um, we are, we always have, essentially our, our board has made plans for us or we, we've kinda, they've kinda made that decision that we have reserves built up to hopefully with sustain for four to five months, depending on every, uh, four to five months to continue without any, any, any funding, but it'd be very difficult to do without support from both of you on this area and we do greatly appreciate that. Um, I don't disagree necessarily, this is something for me personally, I don't disagree necessarily, but there needs to be a pause and a reevaluation of some state and federal grants. Um, there's several agencies I've met while kinda being in this world, current world, that I don't know what they provide, services they provide for a community, but another receiving funding. So it's, I mean, that's a, it's a personal thing for me, so I'm pretty confident, hopefully, that, the only thing I would like, I don't, I doubt it will happen. Hey, maybe don't, if we get a letter, hey, maybe don't, uh, expect any reimbursement in the last month of the second quarter or something like that, I don't think it's gonna happen, cause I, it'd be, it'd be nice. Uh, like I said, but, uh, you know, I, I do, I know there's restructuring things and I, we, you know, we have no hidden dangers. We're here to serve children that are victims of child abuse the best we can, especially they should serve, so they're not here to roll campus, where sometimes I feel like we get forgotten about. But we're here to provide those services, uh.
So can, I'm kinda new, I'm more than new.
Absolutely, well, I.
Can you kinda walk me back a little bit about what you guys do and where you come from and where's your office here or how much?
So essentially, we, uh, we are the first response after report of child abuse to be made. Um, our law enforcement, the DCF, will, the Department of Children's will reach out to us. Um, hey, we have this kid in this, this child in this area, these reports have came in, we'd like to schedule an interview. Uh, we do have offices, six offices throughout Western Kansas, uh, uh, close to probably Hayes. Uh, we have a substation in Colby, main office in Scott City, uh, Garden City, uh, substation in Sublet and an office in Liberal. Um, what we're able to do though, we're, we're mobile, we're the only mobile child advocacy center, so as soon as that call is made, say for sheriff here in this, in your area, uh, we'll come out, we'll schedule an interview with the child, so we'll drive one of our buses out. Um, on that bus, we'll, we'll have one of our interviewers and also an advocate, um, and depending, uh, possibly an intern or supervisor, kinda depends on where. Bring, we have, sometimes we have some, uh, interns from Hayes that come out, they're part of one of their courses, they'll, they'll work with our agency. Uh, so we'll schedule the interview, law enforcement, DCF, uh, any other agencies that are tasked with, uh, safety of children will be on hand. Um, and then they'll be interviewed by one of our interviewers. Um, so essentially, what we see, what we kinda see a lot, um, across, those kids that we kinda come across, they're told not to talk to law enforcement. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm not parent too, hey, sit down, buckle up, or there's that cop right here, he can come get you, that kinda thing. You know, we, we're all kinda, we all do that, that's just, hey, safety thing, you're getting in trouble, that kinda thing, well, sometimes that kinda carries on to other things, unfortunately. The child never wanna get their parent in trouble or their parents, significant other, or family member, whoever it might be, unfortunately, so. Um, sit, sit down and speak with one of our, they sit down and essentially speak with one of our interviewers, uh, those previously mentioned agencies are on hand. Um. Then we kind of conduct the interview, kind of look through, okay, who made the report? Okay, it was a teacher. Child reported, teacher, X, Y, and Z occurred during Christmas time, that kind of thing. So we kind of do what we can to kind of unpack that. Um. DCF might also have another report from nurse at the school. Hey, we also did see bruising on this and this day as well, too, closer to Thanksgiving, that kind of thing. Um, that's when maybe our interviewer steps out, hey. Where would we kind of speak with the other agencies? Hey, how are, how are we looking, folks? Are we missing anything? Hey. I'm looking back through the reports. I'm seeing an event from Thanksgiving. Would you mind asking, hey, what? What happened? What, what, you know, can you tell me about, you know, Thanksgiving? You know, I know you talked to Nurse. Uh, Nancy, you know, can you kind of unpack what's, what happened there? Maybe that was another instance of abuse, that kind of thing as well, too. The goal is one interview for the most part by our agency, essentially. If there's multiple needed, then we will definitely facilitate. Uh, first and foremost, not to re-traumatize the child. Um, and then most importantly, we never want that child to feel like, um. They're in trouble for coming forward or for speaking out about things. Um. And it's unfortunately more likely than not they're informing on an individual they have a relationship with. They have. Whether it be a parent, step-parent, um. Partner, new partner of, uh, biological parent, family member, family friend, that kind of thing. Um. Statistics nationwide, we said about ninety-five percent that this child has that. Ninety-five percent this child knows that individual has a relation, has established a relationship with the individual. Our agency says about ninety-eight percent. Um, so yes, informing about strangers is needed, but at the same time, unfortunately, it's not just the strangers. It's the folks that are. Um, getting the trust of these families and then unfortunately hurting these children. Um. We stay with the family. We continue to work with the family, uh, throughout the court process. Um, in the event that District Attorney might reach out to us, County Attorney, sorry, reach out to us, say, hey, I'm having a hard time getting this family on the line. Absolutely. We'll, we'll, our agency will pay a visit and maybe open DCF with us, or we'll just drop in. Um, is it because? Families, uh, some sort of financial hardship that we don't longer have the phone, have been moved. Um, things like that, or is it unfortunately because somebody's back in a home that's not supposed to be? So we can just stop at, hey, you know, what are you guys doing? What, how are things going? Uh, we have court on the sixteenth, you know, someone, someone's trying to reach out to you. Um, in the event it is that someone's back in the home, we'll, we'll make that report, turn it over to law enforcement, DCF, hey, this is what we, this is what we've seen. We stopped in the distance, pay a visit just to say hi. I got the request of. Um, and we do our own follow-up as well, too, to reach out, hey. You know, we see courts coming up. Would you like an advocate there with you? Um. Or in the event, uh, County Attorney reaches out to us, hey, this, this child is set to testify. Um, so what we'll do essentially, we'll do that kind of a mock court. We'll walk in, walk to the courtroom. Hey, this is what courts come back. Twelve individuals sitting here. Gentlemen in a robe, well, usually most judges I've met, I've met a couple that don't wear robes, but that's usually different, but. Uh, gentleman in a robe up here as well, you know, help me speak with you. Just so you're aware, this individual will be seated here. Also, depending on the, I guess, the climate of the. Around the allegations. Uh, we don't ever, we don't ever notice, always sometimes if the family that might side with the perpetrator or the, the suspect. Is there too, just to let them know, we, not so much let them know, but. Kind of get them, uh, ease their, their stress. But I mean, court's stressful for an adult, a little for a child. Um. So, so we'll continue with the family, uh, regardless of what kind of the outcome of court is. We'll also stay with that family to provide therapy for your cause. Um. Like I've mentioned, we are the only mobile child advocacy center, so we're there as well, too. Rather than the family, which more than likely a single parent household, travel down to one of our offices for therapy. Where are they going to come out? Park outside of school. Maybe we have that child in our, uh, in our therapy bus for about an hour. Um, therapist able to work with them, um, kind of go from there, rather than. Make the trip, making trip down to Hayes. We're losing, uh, school time, but we're only that, but we're losing more likely half days of work. Um, just, it's just kind of, just to help that child do, do the best we can to cope with that, do this. Can we give them the tools to cope with that trauma down the road?
Sure.
Um, it might not be seen through childhood, which it, or it might be. You might see behavioral issues, that kind of thing. Um. Um, so to the best we can to kind of provide them with positive tools, um, to cope with the trauma. And also as well, too, like I kind of mentioned, the more services we can kind of keep providing in a home, the least likely they are to be, uh. Pre-victimized. Um. And so that's. Um, actually, then we do provide all these services for pretty costly families. Uh, that us being mobiles, it's pretty amazing. I'm, I'm always pretty excited about that. It, it wouldn't be realistic for us to have an office in every county. It would be, it'd be amazing, but the overhead on that would be.
Sure.
Be, be difficult. Uh, but yeah, us being able to come out, provide those interviews, um. Provide the interviews, uh, the advocacy and that therapy as well, too. Um, and we also are. I didn't mention a little bit about our medical program, so we do have a doctor on staff with us.
Yeah.
Um. So this, our doctor can facilitate, uh, exams, whether it be physical, um, or if the allegation dictates, um. A sort of sexual assault has occurred, our doctor, the doctor on, we have on staff that will facilitate, uh, specialized exam. For that, if that is the case, um. You know, and I don't mean to pick, but, uh, essentially at Finney County right now, um, we serve Finney County. If an adult presents himself in the ER needing a, a sexual assault exam, then we're having to send them to Liberal or to. Scott, uh, Liberal or, um, Dodge City right now. Because their, their, their program isn't set up right now. There's been a lot of change in hands. When folks leave, unfortunately, they take that training with them. They take those train certifications with them, so. We're fortunate that we have a doctor on staff that, okay, uh, let's load up our medical bus. Where would you like us? Absolutely. Let's, let's help us be there. Let's see, exactly. He'd, he'd see the call and she's there first and foremost for, um. Any physical treatment and then she does do her. Uh, protocols that does collect evidence along the way, um, but she's kind of there for the, the health and safety of that individual. Um, and then. Any fact finding that comes, you guys turn it over to law enforcement. And it's, it's a. It's a, it's sad that we have, we, we have that, have to have that program, but it's. Um, she does an amazing job. She's one of those caring individuals I've ever met. Um, we, we've responded to several, uh, adult calls, something that. We, we have responded to, but not necessarily kind of falling in our scope yet. We hope to, down the road, that maybe that's something we'd be able to add as well, too. Um, it's just finding the, the funding and some, some extra hands, some extra folks to work with our agency to, to do that. So. Um, in this last year, uh, here in Grand County, this is twenty twenty-four, uh, we responded to, it's like twenty-three. Uh, therapy sessions for four children. Thirty-four advocacy sessions for nine children. We provided three medical services out this way as well, too. Uh, sixteen children, total of six services in twenty twenty-four. Um. And I'll leave this here with you as well, too. Do you folks have any questions?
No, I think we covered it very well.
So, yeah. I hope I answered all of your questions.
No, exactly.
Uh. Well, welcome, welcome aboard. Congratulations. I usually try to look, look at that, see who's new to the gang here. I know a member kind of changed some things some places and. Appreciate it. I'll leave this here with you folks and I'll be, um, for your consideration of what you folks contributed last year. Um, we did five thousand, something there.
See, last year we did five thousand, uh, healthcare sales tax.
Sorry, I know that again. Actually, we do greatly appreciate your support.
Absolutely.
I, I'd like to say I'm more than confident that when things kind of settle down, if that, if in the event there is a pod, I know that we'll be. We're, we have no hidden agenda. We're here to take care of kids, especially in rural Kansas and. Go from there. So we've, we've got a lot of folks, especially the. Uh, up in D'Teke that are back and it's like, hey, this is what we're doing. We're not.
Yeah.
I, you know, I, I know there's, I, that's, yeah, there's, there's things that need looked at. This is where it's frequent driver going out here, so.
All right. Does that need to be in motion or?
Yeah, I was saying, can I get someone to make the.
Make a motion.
I'll say.
Healthcare sales tax, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I'll follow you. Great drive and a film concussion. See y'all on the good day.
Thank you. Curtis?
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. I'm Curtis with next day. Um, I'm working on surveillance and access control quotes for you guys. I'll try to print it out. I think she might have gave you one copy, but I had to make some adjustments on one, so I'm just going to give you the fresh ones.
Okay.
Was the final bit a cheaper than, or?
Oh, I think none of them might have, actually. Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, look, there's pictures.
The pictures are the best part. So the first one I handed you is the surveillance portion. And then the second quote is the access control, which I'll start with surveillance first.
Okay.
Oh, my bad. That's my. So how are you guys doing today?
Good.
Has there been light-hearted discussions today or has it all been serious?
It's always, it's always light-hearted in here.
Yeah, very serious. Okay, we are the town rounds.
There we go. Does everyone have a copy of the access control one or did I hand out? Five of those. I had to self-play and it's not going that well.
There's which?
Surveillance, solution, access, control.
So everyone in this has a copy of each?
I do.
Good deal.
Yep.
Yeah, that works, true. So I'll start with the surveillance portion. Um, it's the camera system. Kendra reached out and essentially you guys have twelve cameras currently in the building. Um, with this layout, I'm going to change, uh, the layout just a little bit because. I actually have seven cameras on here, so we can reduce the number of camera counts, but cover more. So if you guys just look at a layout with me, um, we have twelve domes scattered about, they have about ninety degrees of view. Um, I'm really going to take advantage of using our three sixty cameras that we have, so those are the ones that are kind of peakish. Um, three, two, and eight. Uh, you can cover a whole room, every single degree of the room, so I'm going to take advantage of those, um, particular cameras, three, two, and eight. Uh, the two is in the atrium. Out here is what I would call it. Three's near the district court hallway, covering all three parts of that hallway. Um, or that's camera eight. And then three is in the hallway, uh, on the southeast side. And then this main hallway here, I'm going to use a dual sensor, so essentially it's ceiling mounted. There's two, two cameras in one housing. It's going to cover each direction. So since it's a very long hallway, that's why I did that. And then I have three standard domes at nine, four, and seven. Um, those are just kind of your typical dome that you have now. Um, I did deal with the eight, eight megapixel domes, though, so I think you guys might have four megapixel domes right now. Um, but essentially the only message you need to know is we're going to change the design up a little bit, cover more with less cameras. This is kind of how I would look at it. Do you guys have any questions about what cameras wear? Is, is everything seeming to be covered? Um, from your guys' standpoint? Um, we are going to have to do, do cable drops. I looked at the current cable drops. They're CAT five. We're on CAT six now. CAT six is going to last most likely thirty years, but CAT five was. Probably used around twenty ten or so, and then it was used after twenty ten, but, um, cable drops will need to be run. Which means it's going to be very labor intensive because we're going to have to pull every CAT cable under the tunnels, which is. A very long drawn out process, so.
It's also like much for.
The best case scenario is they can wrap the cable around the current cable and pull it that way, but that doesn't always work because the knot can get loose and come apart, so. Um.
So we don't, that's not a draw ceiling type right there.
Um, to my knowledge, there's no.
No.
Draw ceiling.
The tunnels.
Yeah, kind of like at a hospital, basically.
Yeah, so.
Is a hospital used next to it?
Yes. So I'm sure Ty Hawkman will love that project if he gets to do it. It's really not too hard, but, um. It definitely adds some, some labor and some extra things to consider. Um, but if we go to the, the quote real quick, I'll briefly go through it. Um, so the first component is there's two outright purchase options. So one is going to be the outright purchase option. And the other is a monthly. It's all based on what you guys are looking for. Are you wanting to pay a one-time fee? Own the system and run until it dies, or are you going to want to pay a monthly fee? Have Nextech own the equipment, maintain it throughout the contract. So. That's the main difference. You have flexibility. Um, but I quoted you the outright in the five-year. Essentially, um, the five years, four thirty-five per month. It would start billing once the project's completed. Your NDR could fail, which is two or three thousand dollars. A camera could fail. Nextech can replace the camera, the labor to do so. You never get another bill. That's the nice thing about the monthly. Also, you spread it out over five years, which is nice. Um, if you guys aren't crazy about the monthly, there is the outright purchase option. Um, but I did quote you Access, which is the best surveillance system brand we have to offer. We have two other lines called Bitvatech and Handwall. Um, if you have more of a budget that I need to, you know, get within, I would probably recommend going to Handwall or Bitvatech, because this is the best we have to offer. We've been using it for ten plus years. Customers are the happiest with this product. So that's what I would recommend going into. Um, but just to briefly go through the parts, I have a twelve-port network video recorder. This is where all the cameras terminate to. This is where all of your footage is stored on. Um, and it has twelve ports. You guys are going to be. I believe at ten, ten channels, so you guys could add a few cameras in the future. Um, I have four of those eight megapixel turn cameras. Those are just the standard dome camera that kind of looks like the ones you have now, so I have four of those. Um, I have three of the three hundred sixty degree panoramas, and then I have one of the dual sensors that would go in this hallway. Um. I have the battery backup, which is what the NBR plugs into. That's if the power goes out. It can stay up for about fifteen to twenty minutes, power down properly. You don't just want equipment turning off. Um, there, then there. I have nine cable drops. And I was wrong. It's, it's nine cameras, not seven, so sorry about that. I have nine cable drops and then labor to install it, so that's how we get our pricing. Um. You guys have any questions about layout, equipment, brand, pricing?
So the, the total for the, um. If we were to rent, rent the stuff or.
Yep, or lease it.
I would probably, yeah, sign up for five years for that or.
Yep, it'd be, it'd be a five-year lease. If you want a different year, we can look at doing a different term. Um, but essentially you pay four thirty-five per month for five years. At the end of that agreement, you can either renew. You can buy the current system out at ten percent cost, cancel. There's lots of options. Um, we usually do five years because that's the lifespan of a system now, whether it's a computer, printer, surveillance camera. Five years, because it only supports updates for about five years. So. Um, you can use it past five years, but at some point. All the cameras are IP-based. They're not going to support updates pushed out. It's going to be more of a risk, more of a hassle, but, uh.
So if we did the outright.
Yep.
And we had a camera go down.
It's all builders reported, so Ty would still come out, replace it, the labor to do it. Um, we'd still do it, but it's just builders reported whatever needs to be done. So.
So what kind of warranty is on the camera? So if it goes out?
Uh, I believe the camera is now, it's, it's either a three or five-year, um, warranty, but you still got to cover. The tech time, which is actually the more expensive part. I don't, labor's more expensive than the equipment. But yeah, the camera has a, I believe it's a five-year now, the access does. Um. Okay. But yeah, good questions and just make sure at the end of the day, it's either or. You don't pay eighteen thousand plus monthly. Some people think that's the case. That would be great for Nextech, but not great for the customer, so. Um, but yeah, that's all I have for the. For the surveillance component. Um, on the access control, I'm going to go off memory, but we're not going to get too much into the parts and components because unless you guys are super interested in that. Essentially, we're doing four doors for access control. It's going to be this district court door. That employee door, the other employee door, and the main entrance door. We're on the east side, so we have four doors total. They're all going to need to be hardwired. Um, the thing we're going to try to do with this particular project is not run to. Appreciate it. Uh, there's the fifth one. Um, unlike surveillance, we're going to try to not run access controlled cableing under the tunnel because this cable is about this thick. So we're going to do kind of a mishmash of if there is. Um, power outlets near each door, which there should be, um, at some point, we're going to basically have your door controller. And a wireless access point near the door. That's going to be doing all the communication back to the server room essentially. So we're going to alleviate. Holding this thick cable through your tunnel, which I think would almost be impossible, to be honest, because it's a thick cable. We only have so much room to pull through walls and stuff like that. So all your doors are going to be hardwired, but we're going to be doing a mismatch of. Hardwired doors with wireless communication. Um, that's very important. Um. Trying to think of what else.
So it'd be just like a reader, you just run up, you, everybody would have a home card, you just. Clicking, click out.
Yeah, if you guys can use a key card, key fob or your phone. Um, I got you on the fifty user subscription model, which, um, it starts at fifteen, goes fifty, a hundred, so if you guys only have fifteen, we can go down to that, but. I thought fifty would be pretty safe, um, but the mobile credential comes with it every year, which is nice.
So these doors would be, you'd have to have a key card to get in these doors?
Yep, and we can also do a schedule.
So if somebody, oh, we can do the schedule too?
Yep. Depending on how important the schedule is, we can do basic scheduling with this system. There, there's lots of workarounds, but.
Okay. So then if somebody wanted in this door, we would have to have somebody, or we come over and pour them from inside?
Uh, if they were coming.
So if they were outside, wanted to come in that door, right here, we'd have to have somebody let them in.
If it's programmed that way.
Right, let's just.
Yeah.
And until we program it that way.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's how we would do it initially, but most likely we put it on a schedule, like this is Friday, eight to five, throw the doors unlocked, we don't have to do that. Um, I didn't include this, but there's a B D, B D S video door station option, where you can put essentially a cam on the door, someone could press it, and that's how they could be bashed in.
And somebody else would have to push the button a lot of me.
Yep. So there's a lot of ways you can go around it, but I just did basic four doors, everyone's going to have a reader, and we're going to use a little bit of the schedule feature as well. No, but this project is going to be pretty labor intensive, even though we're not running the cable in the tunnels, um, every door is hardwired, so that means we have to get power to a reader, we have to get power to a strike on the door. And then this main door is going to have a, um, request to exit motion, it's going to have a paddle, so that, I can go through some of the parts if you would like, but just. Three of your doors are the Jackson, they're called like the, the Jackson crash bar. They're going to be pretty hard to work with, I, I don't know when they were installed, if it was twenty, thirty, forty years ago, but. Um, we can put access control hardware on it, make them work, but I probably do recommend getting some of those worked on a little bit. Because this door in particular, it's dragging, so you can see on the, the edge, it's been rubbing against the door for so long, but. Um, just pretty labor intensive project. But do you guys want me to go into some of the hardware, or do you want me to talk more about pricing, I mean, the pricing is kind of the same setup as the surveillance?
I worry with the pricing, I think. Yes, I would say so, yes, pricing.
Because when I was building these quotes, I mean, we didn't have an initial budget, so I was built, here's the number of doors we have, here's what hardware we need to put on it, I mean, that's kind of what I did, but. Um, we still got the outright with monthly option. With access control anymore, I would probably recommend the monthly option, because they need maintain more routinely, stores get slammed, the wind pushes them shut, people slam them, so. But I would recommend, thinking about a particular budget you guys want to be within, the nice thing is we can spread it out over years with the monthly. So you don't have to do a one time expenditure, but.
So you were talking about if we wanted to program them, would that be extra to this to them?
Uh, the techs are going to program everything during the stall, so they're going to get all.
Included in this.
Yep, so all the installation, configuration, everything is included in the quote, it's just you got to tell us what, how you want it to run essentially, and they'll ask you, do you want this or that? Um, do you know who would be controlling the user database, like you have an employee, do you know who would bring them on board, give them their credential?
We'd have to talk to the.
Because we'll, we'll want the tech to train that person and then probably a second person as their redundancy, just so. Could you, if you guys get a new employee, you're going to be getting them set up on their credential and all, it's pretty simple, but. But do you have any more questions about the access control component? But just, just to end, essentially every door is going to have a trove above it, the trove is going to be linked to, um, power outlet. Essentially inside the trove, that's how your strike, your card reader and any other stuff is going to be powered. And we're also going to have the door controller, which is going to receive a wireless signal from your network room. So essentially, uh, that's how we're going to alleviate the cable drop, there's going to be a nice looking trove above each door, that's going to be controlling the power and, um, controlling the data going in. Out of that, uh, car reader. But now every time someone enters with a card, uh, key card, key fob, you know who entered, when they entered. Um, you know if they got denied access, because they don't have the privileges to go in that door, so you have an auto trail now with the system. And there's lots of other features too, but it really, if something happens here, you're going to know who's, who did it, who's, was involved, it's really hard to get around it, so.
So basically, if we went, with the monthly plan, did both, it'd be like eight hundred and fifty dollars a month, right?
Yes.
Yes. What about outright? Be the.
Yes, it's basically the seventeen plus.
Thirty six thousand.
Yep. And the, the good thing that you guys, you have Ty Hoffman, which is a security tech, you have an own security tech in your town, so that's pretty rare.
He's on here a lot.
So do, as far as. Do you guys, do you guys do the cards, or do we, like the hospital head, uh, our EMS director, do make the cards with the card reader stuff on it? Do you guys do that, or?
Are you wanting like rent photos on the car, well, we, I mean, they do live there for the hospital. Yeah, I mean, in this particular quote, I have, uh, the key card, the key fob included, so basically you can use all three options, but if you only want to do key card. We just give you a stack of key cards and when.
It's already got the whole link built in, how, are they the same?
Yes, they're, they're just a standard PVC card, um, but they're not like the old technology, there's not any barcode attached, it has a frequency, you set it on a little, um, card reader to program it.
Right.
But essentially on the software side, you just type someone's name and key card, and let a key card on it, and that's their living card. So, um, but you just have to decide what you guys want to use primarily. I would recommend the mobile route, because you don't have to buy additional key files or key cards. At, at any time, you get it in your subscription every year, fifty users for mobile, so that's the route I would go. But yeah, I know it's a lot to take in, um, if you guys have any questions, I'll give you my card, you guys can call or email me. Um, I worked with the, one of our main SCs a lot on the access control component, so there's a lot of power supply stuff that we had to figure out. A lot of stuff, that, that part's over my head, powering doors and.
Right.
Twelve volt, twenty four volt, I mean, so I worked heavily with them on that component, but. I understand everything else pretty, pretty good, so. Um, you guys got any more questions?
Not right now, we'll get over.
I guess.
Yeah. Give us a little time, I think, yeah.
Do you guys have any thoughts about how you want to think about the budget for this, because at the end of the day, this is the initial quote, I mean, this, this will get you what was asked, but. If we need to, if you say we only have a fifteen thousand dollar budget for surveillance, I mean, we can make that happen, it's just.
Yeah, we'll definitely.
We're going to have enough, so.
Okay.
Perfect, well, I'll give you a few of my cards and I can be on my way, so. Am I the last one for today?
One more.
One more. There's my card, I got myself on there, email. I think I already gave you a card, so.
All right, Curtis, thank you very much, appreciate you coming out.
Absolutely.
Thanks, everybody. See you.
Thank you.
Blessing Bob, gear up. Oh, yours?
Okay, Bob has got the, uh, estimate from Reggie on the painting, I don't. We have scenery set, that's just for the labor.
That's the scrape it and all the, that old paint out there, off the ceiling where it's getting pretty bad there when you first walk in, it's be scraping everything off and then. Repainting it, so.
That includes the painting too, then?
It doesn't include the paint, it just includes the.
But that's just the labor.
And he does recommend that we go with a good paint.
Sure.
So we don't end up having to do it three or four years.
No, no chance of inmates doing it?
No.
Yeah, whatever's, whatever is done, it's going to have to be done quick, because we'll have to start forming out inmates to.
Sure. Do you know how much, did he give us how many gallons of paint?
He didn't know for sure, or he didn't give us an estimate on the paint itself.
Right.
But it, he did tell me he thinks he could probably have it done within a week to ten days total, so.
He gets most of his paint down here, doesn't he?
Yeah, he, he, he did say that, uh, he usually gets it here, but if we want to get it somewhere and pick it up ourselves, you know, maybe we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before, before we approve it, I'd like to kind of know the final, you know, price.
That way there's no, no hidden, no hidden stuff.
Yeah. Okay, we'll just figure out what kind of.
If you guys want to get the paint yourselves and plus some price, okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah.
We'll figure that out.
Your next meeting, we'll.
Okay.
And I don't know if you've had any more time to think about the, the computers and that for GPT, I did sign the contract with him.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, but as far as the cost, we figured roughly fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars to come out of nine one one done.
Okay.
And that's going to leave roughly eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars. So.
How much was that last year?
Eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars and thirty three cents. And I'm sure I can find some of it, but I don't know if that, if you guys would be willing to help out on some of that, because we're going to have to start budgeting now for the monthly fee as well.
Okay.
On that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'd guess that's what we do, so, our county general, but if you guys can come up with a little more money, just go with that.
Okay.
I looked at the contract and looked into me.
Yeah. So, anyway, we'll, I guess, get with Kendra and we'll kind of figure this out.
Yeah.
And, uh, but like I said.
It has to happen, so.
Yeah, it's got to happen, it doesn't matter where, where it comes from.
True.
Because like I said, he was not budgeted at all. So, anyway, that's all I have.
All right, very good.
All right, we'll get back with you next week on the.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Hello, Ken, Kendra, do you have anything else?
I believe I do.
All right, I'll go to the jury. All right.